Everybody for coming to the workshop this morning. And at this time, we'll open the meeting and stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Digital Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ken, I guess you are the coordinator of this meeting, so you can go ahead and give us a stretch.
Well, I appreciate everybody coming. I appreciate y'all letting us do this. We're getting back into the storm season and all now, so we want to hit on a little bit of how it all works. We want to let you know, or give a little bit of the education on what emergency management is, what it does, how the EOC runs and all during gray skies, which is storms and stuff like that, and how it runs during blue skies, which is the rest of the year when storms and all not happen, what all goes on and all that. Now, a little bit of what some of this is, we have a House Bill 180, which will get discussed a little bit more in a little while. But it says that the elected officials in the administration and the counties and the different departments will start being required to have some of this type training and all that. So this is kind of like a little preemptive to some of that just going to start coming down. And I'll say, but anyway, we want to do it, but before we get into it all, David had asked me to do a little quick update on an issue that went down yesterday evening. Yesterday afternoon around, I want to say around 3:00, 4:05, we had a kind of a catastrophic failure out here at EOC dispatch, not one, at the center. Everything actually went down. Phones went down, radios went down, CAD system, everything went down. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about what happened, how it happened, or why it all happened right now. But just know that it did go down. It take, they had the phones and the computer system and all back up by about 6:25. Everything's back running 26:25, 6:30, except for the radio system. The radio system took a little bit longer, and they were able to get it all literally back up and running by about 9:30-ish last, yesterday afternoon. We do, we have checked out as far as we can be, but able to check. No, nobody that tried to call down the one wasn't able to get through. There was no lost calls, no lost people and all that. The ones that were out here, the people in the center did a good job of trying to get it all back online. Ken, they were able to contact the different companies and people that they wanted to help get stuff back online. Yeah, Lawrence come in very quickly, jumped on the radio systems and all, and done helping them with that. It was a, they did what they needed to do. They used alternate means of being able to dispatch the people out on the road. Just wanted to let everybody know, in case y'all start to get a lot of calls or get things about anybody knowing about it. But most of the general public probably doesn't even know it happened. It's the people within the system that do, because like I said, I don't think we really missed anything. There are some weekends and things that get changed and stuff that get fixed. We're going to try to make sure that it doesn't, it doesn't happen again. They're going to go through that, and we're going to figure, everybody's going to get it figured out basically. But at this time, everything's back up and running, everything's good. So just wanted to kind of give a quick overview of that for you. But now we'll go back into what we're actually here for. That's our training, educational stuff on emergency management and gray skies and storms and all of that. With that, I'm going to go ahead to Carrie. I'm going to let her explain about FROCK and about some of the stuff. We all went to an educational thing for the FDEM, Florida Department of Emergency Management here a few weeks ago. We picked up a lot of things. We learned a lot of things we didn't know, a lot of different things. And also Carrie will get you started on part of this. Before I, I'm kind of bouncing here, before I get started on all that. Last year when we had our storms and all, there was things that needed, was solved, that needed to be fixed, needed to be tweaked. We've done that. We've built a team on, to run the things out here and to make sure that things go better and things goes to good. So with our team, that's me, Carrie, Shane, Shane and Jennifer, I'm trying to look to see. Jennifer, and also our dispatcher, so we've got it all. I'm sorry. We've got it all. We've made a team. Everybody's got their little sections that they're, they're good with, and they're going to be able to handle. And we'll go along with that. Now, that being said and all too, from this point on, when there is an activation and all, there won't be board meetings out here during MDOs anymore. That is one of the things that we've picked out that is a very big hindrance and all of the stuff, because there's so much stuff going on out here. There's so much activities and all happening, that we can still have our board meetings if need be. We're just going to have an offsite that won't be in this building out here during an activation. So that was one of the things that was pointed out from the state emergency management office that we kind of needed to change or something. And that's a couple of, like I said, because there's so much going on out here. This building is supposed to be a secure building and all anyway. And when you open it up to a board meeting, you have to open up to all of the general public and all that. So it makes a lot of confusion during a very confusing time already. So we're trying to streamline things and make them a little bit better. But even during storms and all, we'll do our morning, pass down our morning evaluations of everything. And then I will be able to address the board or whatever it needs to be to address that. We'll pass on information about your getting, like I said, I can address the board and keep everybody informed of what's going on and what's happening. We're just trying to streamline things a little bit. But I'm sorry, we'll go ahead. We'll carry and let her explain.
Everybody, so my portion of this right now, as it relates to all of it, is going to be talking about the FROCK plan. And that includes the Senate bill. I'm going to, I'm going to pass this out. If you'll just take one and pass it down. I know Shane did send this out yesterday. And there are, go ahead.
What FROCK stands?
Oh, I'm going to, yeah, thanks. Shane did send this out yesterday, so this is some information that was discussed while we were at the Florida Department of Emergency Management training in Orlando. But FROCK is the Florida recovery obligation calculation. And what that means is that when, and Shane, help me on this if I'm not familiar with it. But what that means is they have a system in place that collaborates with FEMA. All of their documentation and the system that they have is FEMA approved. And while we were at the training, while I was at the training, I made, my main, the training was for the procurement process. For the items that we get from the state and the tracking and how all of that is going to work on a local level. So the FROCK system is where we take our plan. I'm going to kind of balance a little bit and then go back. At the training, they talked about possibly having everybody, all the counties, had to submit a plan. It wasn't mandatory. Now it is. The Senate bill 180 has made it so that everybody's going to have to submit a plan to FDEM to show what your emergency plan is going to be. So when we previously had gotten together, we created a plan that has been shared with you. Our portion of it has been shared with you, and that is the plan that we're hoping to work from. Obviously, we recognize that it has to be a little bit fluid, because just like this document coming out yesterday, it changes some of the requirements, so we need to be able to tweak that as the, as things change. But we submit that plan through FROCK to the Florida Department of Emergency Management. And then they have some boilerplate language, some templates, and they make sure they score you and they see how on point your plan is. And that plan is then approved or sent back for corrections. And what that plan does is it helps make sure that you get all of your reimbursements.
Yes, you're doing good.
So that makes sure that the county is on point to get their reimbursements from FEMA. And that's even with the changing of FEMA, that is all still active and happening. So the Florida Department of Emergency Management, their plan, this FROCK is so good. It is so worthy with FEMA that FEMA is instituting it. And there are other states that are now taking it on. So we're kind of ahead of the game, which is really nice. We have a plan in place. We are part of FROCK. The plan is going in FROCK to make sure that we are hitting the marks and we can get our score. While I was at the training, one of the things that they stated is their goal is not to be punitive or penalize anybody. It is to make sure everybody can get maximum reimbursement in these storm situations. I think that's all. Is there anything you need to add? That's my portion for right now.
Okay.
The only thing that I will add to that is that members of the board, you will be seeing come before you in the next few weeks. I'm still working on getting it all downloaded and filled out as appropriate. So there will be an opt-in contract, for lack of a better word, that y'all will have to approve opting us into the FROCK system. We've done it in the past two years. It's not anything y'all haven't seen before. But we'll have to do that for this year. After that, we will automatically be opted in. If we want to opt out, then we provide documentation to the division that we want to opt out of the FROCK system. So be on the lookout for that. That'll be coming on a board agenda coming up over the next few weeks. Whenever we have that, just us opting into the system for one more year before it carries over and we're automatically renewed each year, so.
See, it's a good thing with our county and what Shane has been doing over the years. Like I said, we're, like Carrie said, we're actually ahead of the game in this. It's something that we've, that has been, something that has been encouraged for a little bit of time over the years now, but it wasn't required. But now with this new Senate bill and all, it's become a requirement. So we're not having to go in and create a whole new thing, a whole new world. We've already, Shane has already got a lot of it done, all that. We're just going to have to tweak it a little bit to go along to meet the new requirements. But it's, we're actually way ahead of the game on that. So we're, we're doing good. Now, we're, one of the things, and one of the reasons, like I say, that I wanted to do this. We have a new commissioner who's probably never been involved with our storms and our activations and stuff like that. And it's always a good refresher for the, for the other commissioners and all that, that we're here, that have been through some of it. Last year was different, different than anything we've ever had before. We've never had the damage to our county that we had last year. We've had a lot of small stuff, a lot of small storms and all, or storms that affected usually more one area than another. But, but last year it covered kind of wide, and it was, it was something new for us. And, but we learned a lot from it, and we've been able to make a lot of new plans and change some of the ways things were being done to overcome some of that problem. So if it does happen again, which we're all hoping it does in any time soon, but if it does, we'll be a lot better equipped to handle that. I'm going to get Shane to come up and kind of give you an idea of how it all begins. You know, it's, you don't just walk in one day and say, I'm going to do it. There's kind of a system in place from the state, what happens, what kind of notifications he gets and all that to, to get us on the path to actually an activation and going down that. And then he'll explain a little more about what all the different categories ESS are and all.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Members of the board, guests, thank you all for being here this morning. First, let me say to the board, thank you all for your support of emergency management over the years. I can't do what I do without the support of all five commissioners and the staff and agencies that are affiliated with the board. So thank you for all that. First and foremost, when it comes to events, all disasters, they begin, they end here at the local level. When everybody's gone, when all the state people are gone, when all the federal people are gone, all of us in this room, we are still here putting the county back together for as long as we need to put the county back together. So it begins and ends with us. We're the ultimate responsibility on getting the county repaired. With that in mind, as we go through and different events happen, of course hurricanes are the big one, because that's what we're so familiar with from over the years. And they provide us a little bit of warning when they're going to happen. But there's other events out there that may happen. You know, you may have the spur of the moment, straight line winds, torn attic events that come along. It may be hazardous materials incidents. There may be major traffic accident that happens on one of the interstates over one of our major thoroughfares. Those are all different things that could impact our county outside of the hurricane events and the weather events. So those are all parts of what we have to be prepared for. And local states of emergency, they ultimately come from you all as the Board of County Commissioners. You don't have to wait for a governor, executive order to issue a board of local state of emergency. That can come out whenever y'all have deemed with the input from the appropriate response personnel that the situation is bad enough that a local state of emergency is required. So it ultimately comes to you. So we get that local state of emergency made, we ramp up our emergency operations center. That includes our citizens information center, which we'll talk about in depth in a little bit. We'll let Jennifer talk about that coming up here in just a few minutes. But we're going to focus on this room, the EOC itself. Around the room, we have different frames on the wall, as you can see. Those all represent different emergency support functions and our partner agencies that come in and are a part of the EOC operation with us. The parts of the frame that are in red, that is our instant command system designation. And then the ESFs are the emergency support function. So those are the agencies that fall under that red area. Finance and administration section, that's our ESF seven, resource support. That's where our procurement, our finance, those agencies that are involved in that, that's where they sit at. Our planning and coordination, our planning and information is under the planning section. That falls under us as emergency management. And energy, they kind of flow around the room where there is a room at the table for them. Sometimes we're up here, sometimes they end up at the back table. But our electric company partners, they make up that ESF. The operations section is the largest one. It actually takes up where Chief Hill, Diana and Shane are at, and also the law enforcement side. So the law enforcement part of operations is over here. Fire, health, EMS, they all have a seat at the table over there. And they make up those emergency support functions in the operations section, because they help us with the running of things that are going on that we're having to deal with at the EOC level. The next, we have back here, the logistics section. And then also we bring in our mass care and those agencies, our Red Cross, our Catholic charities, different nonprofit organizations, they are a part of it also. And a very big partner that we have, that we work with throughout the incident and throughout the activation. We have the very back table with the two chairs. That's reserved for National Guard, but a lot of times our IT group, they will set up shop there because they're very important within this also. They bring a lot to the table, helping us make sure that if we have any issues within the EOC, within the building, that they are addressed appropriately and as quickly as possible. As I mentioned, we have the law enforcement section over here, sheriff's office, police department. FDLE, when we're activated, they will send a representative over and they will sit with us here in the EOC while we're activated.
And FHA.
And FHA. Thank you, Bethany. I appreciate that. So that's kind of an overview of the ESF systems and how we operate internally in here and what's that mean. So we have all these agencies in here, and we have to develop incident action plans and situation reports that we provide back up to the state so that they are aware of what we have going on here in Columbia County, so that they have that thumbnail sketch and can see what they can do to provide us with assistance also. Jeff?
I was going to say, since we have a couple of the different ones involved with the ESFs, if y'all would like, if you were to like, you can give a little bit of an idea of what you do and what your, what your role is in here with the health departments.
I'm Diana Dukey. I'm the administrator for the Columbia County Health Department. For our part for the emergency response is that we have to staff the special needs shelter. Currently, we are not only staffing it, we also have equipment. So we have oxygen that we have to provide for those electrically dependent individuals. So we try to support the medical system by being a down step from the hospital, to make sure the hospital doesn't get flooded with people who just need power for their oxygen concentrator or any other medical device that needs power. So we would run the special needs shelter, we would have the equipment, and we would provide care for them. We have a special needs registry that people could register online, tell us all their information. We have nurses, support staff, and we just try to provide as much care as we can to get them through the storm and then try to have them placed back in their home. We also collaborate with elder affairs, if for any reason their home is destroyed, to work with them for getting them placement in a long-term care facility or still living facility. So our main purpose is to make sure that all health and medical is taking care of the county. If one of my team members in operations is having a gap of service for a met need, then I would request from the state to come in and bring in additional support. Previously last year, one of the incidents we had is that it was a perfect storm in which we had in-between contracts for ambulances here in the county. And so it was literally the storm on the day that we were switching contracts. So it kind of caused a little chaos, I would say, for emergency response. So we, I reached out to the state office and we got a strike team for ambulances to come and support the county to help with the movement of patients between hospitals and getting them to the right place. So my goal is just to support anything health and medical.
Good thing. And the fire side of things, we do a lot of gathering of information and all. We have to track our calls, track everything that's going on. The CIC, which we'll get into a lot in a little bit, sends over information. If there's things and all that need to be responded to, stuff that needs to be taken care of, that is not really need to come in on the 911 system, it's not a life threatening emergency and all. Our person that'll be in here will help guys that and prioritize things and get them in order and make sure things are taken care of and all along that lines. And Captain, would you like to say a little bit about what law enforcement does or?
I'm Robert Holloway. I'm captain of criminal investigations and drug task force. During an emergency event like this, we would post up at the EOC. As missions come in, we do our best to go out and solve all those missions, everything.
Good job. There's, you know, like I said, there's, all of the ESFs and all will have people, ESF, I keep saying that. If y'all, I'm used to saying abbreviations of things. So if I say something that you don't know what it is, please just ask. But everybody has representatives in here. So that is one of the reasons I said that we wanted to move our board meetings out, because during an activation, there's all of the different functions in here, all of the different representatives and all of the different groups. And everybody's got a job that they're doing. And it's a lot to it, a lot to keep up with and a lot to coordinate. And so keeping this, this room is available to them and to their needs and all is one of our big things that we're needing to be able to keep up with.
Jeff, before we move on, Chief Butler, is there anything you would like to add from the city police perspective or?
Just that, you know, the last couple of activations, the city and the county have been working very closely together. It's been working out very well. And all I see is that improving as we get more used to cooperating with each other.
Yeah. Chief, what did you think from?
I was going to say the exact same thing. Typically, we work very well with county fire, at least one representative from the department, either, either or is in here, so we don't have to double staff it. And typically, us as chiefs or officers are not in here. We're trying to make sure everything is operating on the outside of the building as well. So we have worked very well together with the county and continue to look forward to growing that relationship as well.
Very good. Very good. I appreciate it. Is there anything our group needs to add before we move on a little bit? All right, good. Well, in a previous board meeting, I'll, I've heard me brought to y'all the plan of action and all. But the way we would start to staff things, the way we lay out shelters and pods and stuff like that, that's our blueprint. That is our blueprint of the way things are working here. Now, that's the countywide events, you know, that's, that's, we had them laid out to where countywide, that's the way things go. Now, of course, if this, if one area of the county is affected more than another area, we're going to concentrate on the affected areas. So that's, like I said, that's a blueprint, that's the way, kind of give you a good idea of the way things will function and the way things will go up here as far as our side of it, not the, not the butt toss and the hands on the ground side that recovery did, that they did. But anyway, so along that lines, everything is fluid. You know, we have to adjust according to the storm, according to the areas affected and all of that. So with our plan and all, one of the things once activation and all picks from the start is our CIC center, which is, Jennifer is going to give you an idea of what that is and explain that, how that works for.
Most of y'all know who I am after being here for as long. I'm Jennifer DuBose. I worked closely with Shane during the storms. Just dominantly, everybody know what our CIC is, our citizens information center. When we are activated, the citizens information center is our filter for everything that is non-emergent. Our citizens information center is probably the most important room in this building, because we make sure that every phone call, we take the load off of our 911 center. That is all, that is our primary function. All the calls that go through there are supposed to be for our citizens to get information about where they can go to get our resources, meaning that if we do set up pods, if we do set up our showers, anything like that, we tell them where to go to get that. We tell them where to go get our sandbags. As soon as Kevin gets us, gives us the go-ahead for where those locations are, that we give out that information. As soon as any information is given to us, we post it in there so that we can disseminate that information out. It is very fluid in that room. As soon as information is given, I post it up on the board for everyone in that room to give it out. Every bit of the information in there, we make sure that it is correct, accurate, and then we also disseminate it out in here into the EOC room. The biggest thing I can say about our CIC room, we staff it very well through Carrie. Carrie has a systematic way now of making sure that we have, I think it's every three days, we rotate people, isn't it?
Yeah, there's a, it's a three-day rotation. Well, it's a, depending on how many people I have it set up, that I can go all the way down to nine people, six people if necessary, and then there's a rotation where they work day, night, day, night. Or sometimes, depending on up to 15 people, it can go day, night break, a day, night break. So there's, there's a whole process that I have that they automatically rotate.
I have 17 people total for my CIC positions. I have 15 total trained. Every May, I will be training everybody all over again. Whether they've had the training or not, they're going to get retrained every year, whether they want it or not. June is our hurricane season when it starts. Every May, right before hurricane season starts, they're going to get trained all over again. Because the way I feel about it, I've been in here for 17 years with the county. Everything changes. Everything needs to be revamped. I'm an education person. I feel like you can be educated and keep, keep learning stuff new every single time. Everything's fluid with what we do. Everything changes. We're going to revamp everything and make sure everybody's up to par. The system, just this year, we went in and we took stuff out of the CIC program that was not needed. We updated it, we revamped it. I even went into your program on your side. We actually sectioned off stuff for the special needs.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Went in there and made sure that we blocked everything off. And now when you go in there for our call takers, I made it easier for them. I am all about making it easier. I'm only as good as the people that work in that room for me. So anything I can do to make it easier for them makes it easier for our constituents. So the information that we take in is disseminated out. I can help our sheriff's department. We actually changed stuff for our sheriff's department as well. All the calls that are going to go in there now for the law enforcement is going to be for the traffic control. I'm actually going to get with them and do a training for them, for their officers out in the field, so that they can put information in, out actually in the field, and put if there's a road blocked. That way, everything can disseminate out to the public works department, help them to where they know where there's a possible road blockage. It actually is going to say now, road blocked and road flooded. That way, everything is very clear and concise. We went in and made several updates to the system to where everything is very updated and clear. We streamlined a lot of stuff where even our agency partners that might want access to it, we can update it to where you might just be able to go in there and like just have information only, get a report to where you can actually see stuff. The city was gracious enough to offer to have two people come over. The city was gracious enough to offer to have two people come over and sit in the room during the CIC event. And if you wanna give me two or three people, that would be great. To where we can have some rotation, I'll be more than happy to train some more people. Anybody who wanna send my way, I'll be more than happy to train them. If you wanna do two or three or even four, we can have two in the morning and two in the evening. That way, I can rotate them. The more the merrier. I'm all about helping out and cross-tying. The CIC, like I said, is all about the information part of it. Anytime that we have any information that comes in there, we are also there to dispel any rumors. A lot of times, what we had last year happen was, well, there's so-and-so here and there's so-and-so there. It was like a food truck might be here at one location or a food truck might be there. A lot of times, that was misinformation. It was stuff posted on like gossip pages and stuff. Well, those gossip pages were wrong. So, we dispelled rumors. That's a lot of what we were doing in there in that room. So, that's what we're there for. We are there to assist the constituents. And that is our main goal, is making sure that the information is out there. Also, making sure that anything that we have in there that y'all need us to know, if y'all get it in the EOCs, they come in there and immediately let us know that there might be information that we need to filter out to the constituents too when they call and vice versa. We come in here and tell them information that they need to know.
Well, and I just wanna add to that. The county has recently hired a PIO. So, that will also assist in making sure that facts are getting out there and the proper information is getting out to the public without the misinformation.
Yes.
That is important.
Yes.
Has he started working?
The 23rd.
Yes. And I'm just, and I'm glad you can follow it up too. And one of the sections I started in there too, was another section in there to help with the PIO position. And it's a section for just request, like when people are requesting certain things, that they're requesting hot meals, that they're requesting ice, that they're requesting certain things. There's a complete section on there. And donations. We had people out offering donations of things, which is what Bethany is, her part of our working group. If they're wanting to donate items, donating food, donating time, donating anything, our call takers can now put that in the system. And we have a way of tracking it. And it's gonna go to Bethany. Bethany can then follow up with our local charities and stuff and cross-tie all that information together.
Right.
So, if there's somebody that's wanting to donate 1,000 meals, there's now a way to track all of that. And now, there's a way to group all that in together. Instead of us trying to say, hold on, I'll call you back, there's a way to go ahead and put it in the system and track it, and then it goes straight to Bethany.
Right. And I'll be facilitating those conversations between the public and our charitable organizations, making sure that we're coordinating with them, that we know where they're active in our community, what they're providing to the community. And then, we're not trying to duplicate efforts and expending how many resources and funds for things that are already there. And we can just direct the public, hey, this is what's happening near your neighborhood. Catholic Charities has this going on. You can provide your time. If you wanna donate money, you can donate money. They have hot meals or whatever it is. We can facilitate that conversation. And I'll be handling that portion. So, there's less confusion. And the county's not inundated with donated items that we don't have room to store.
Sometimes, that was the problem. We were getting phone calls and the people had such a good heart and good soul wanting to do things, but we did not know where to direct them either because we'd never had that problem before. I know it sounds like it's not a problem, but we also just did not have the facilitation to do anything. So, that's where Bethany came in. And she actually started that last year. She was trying to help facilitate kind of rankling stuff together.
So, last year, you had some people donate? And more than one person was trying to figure out how to handle the donation and buy it in.
We stringed.
Air transportation. So, one group was sending crews out, another group was sending crews out, trying to get it all coordinated through one.
Right. So, I will be that point of coordination between all of our charitable organizations, our nonprofits, and our community.
And one of the things Jennifer did not say is she has also put in there requests, when there's requests for food or there's requests for water or requests for whatever it might be, she can now take the information from Bethany and say, you know, this area is requesting food. And we can direct those donations to those areas where it's gonna be more concentrated to the actual.
I had more of a tracking system now because I changed how the layout was in the system.
Yes. And so, we can see how many requests are coming in. We can see where they're coming from, what areas are having the greatest needs. Like, there is a map on there where it is all plotted out. So, we have like a thousand-foot view of what's going on. And we can, again, get those charitable donations, nonprofit organizations, and church involvement to go help those citizens instead of relying solely on county government funds and resources.
So, yes, if I may, this information that's going to be distributed through the, and I see.
The CIC.
Who's the final say for accuracy? When it's sent out, who is that final person going to be in this operation that verifies it's accurate and we're releasing it?
I will be in this operation, this side of the operations. I'm the final one. If it goes wrong, it's my fault. I'll be the one to take all the blame for that. If it goes right, you know, it's a team effort. But if something gets put out wrong, it'll be my fault. I'm the end say-so, be on all of that. Now, if for some reason I am not here, for some reason I'm gone, I'm out for some reason, then Carrie will be the one to make sure everything is accurate before it is put out.
So, the PIO person, where is?
The PIO will be here to gather information and all. But they will help gather from us. I mean, before they put it out, they'll get with us, one of us, and make sure that this is the information I wanna put out. This is what we need. And we'll verify, yes, you are correct. This is what's going on.
So, everything will be proofread by one of y'all before it gets sent.
Because I would have to pull everything from the CIC program. And as a report, this pull, we would look at it before we would like to simply, before they would actually accumulate everything and write it all out. That's why I changed everything the way that I did. Because I wanted, like, I completely understand where y'all are coming from. I wanted foolproof information saying, you know, the rumor mill goes. Saying they're requesting certain amounts in certain areas. I wanted evidence of saying all those calls are coming in from that specific area, that that's where they needed it the most, that they needed ice in that area or they needed hot meals in that area or they needed this in that area. I wanted to give it to the constituents in that area. I wanted to make sure that we filled their need. If they got flooded out, we needed to give them the hot meals because they needed it. Or if they got, you know, whatever tornado came through in that area and they needed those hot meals in that area, they needed that.
Everything will be clarified. We'll have people loose on the ground, like the firemen being out in the city or within the county, or Shane Overstreet being out on the ground. We're gonna verify everything before we get a lot of stuff somewhere that it's not needed or to not be able to put what is needed. We're gonna do a lot of it. And that's some of the things that we've changed in here a little bit, is a lot of our tracking of stuff, our tracking of information, our tracking of supplies, what goes out, where it goes, and how much is actually needed in what areas. So, we're doing a lot more of that to go along with this. And that's helping to streamline and hopefully, we all know, there's other counties around. This had some issues. We don't wanna get into issues that's been in other areas. We wanna keep our, everything we do by book, like as streamlined as we possibly can, be as open as possibly can, and just make it work for the citizens. If citizens need something, we wanna be able to provide it. But we're, as one of the speakers at educational seminars that we went to, when this all comes out, when the government issues and it all opens up, request what you need. It's not an open shopping area. It's not an open, let's see what, who can get the most. Request what you need. The needs will be provided as best as possible from the state. And you disseminate out and we'll keep our records on track and all of it.
And part of that, not to interrupt, but those requests made through the state, the state funds, that's not coming out of the county pocket. There's, like, ultimately, the state picks up that bill if we make those requests through the approved channels when we're told we're able to. So, there isn't like a, oh no, can we afford that? But again, we just need to request what we need and nothing more. So, there's enough to go around.
State has a policy or a timeline. They try to get things done. They say they try to have stuff, if you do a request, they try to have it within 12 hours. But they do their best to not ever go over 24 hours out. So, whatever we're doing, we need to be able to function ourselves for 24 hours. We need a little bit of supplies on hand, we need water, we need MREs, or whatever it might be. We need to keep a certain amount on hand that we can survive for 24 hours.
We're keeping a par level. That's why we just cleaned up our backholding back here. We have a par level back here. And we also have stock over there at the Lake City Airport Building.
And they're keeping inventory of what the stock is to make sure it's there when we need it.
On the question about how information is getting out, just FYI, all the PIOs were under the county's PIOs. So, that one piece of information is getting sent out through everybody's agency. We're not doing multiple press releases. It comes from them and then everybody disperses one thing.
With our new PIO coming on board, we'll have a dedicated person. Sheriff's Office has a dedicated, police, the city have a dedicated. So, with information this year, our goal is for whatever goes out to be as accurate as possible. Now, there's always, always going to be a mishap of some type. It's life. Nobody's perfect. But it will be corrected as quickly as possible if something happens. Along with all that, now the CIC, we talked about. Next thing we go into is our sheltering. How the sheltering is done, the shelter locations, and stuff like that.
So, as part of the plan that we put together, again, depending on where the emergency is at, the shelters, as needed, will be opened in those areas according to the plan that we have in place. With the shelters, just so you know, for CIC and shelters, I schedule staffing the CIC and I schedule staffing the shelter. My goal with doing this, in this rotation that I created, is to make sure that we, as an employer, are also looking out for the best interest of our employees as far as their safety goes. And my main objective is to schedule people as best as I can closest to their home. So, if I have staff that live down in Fort White, my goal is to make sure they are working in Fort White. And if I have to, in the shelter or the community center there, if I have to move people, it's gonna be because I don't have a choice. But I wanna keep people, if you are scheduled to work in a shelter, that's always your shelter. So, if we have an activation and there's a state of emergency and it's only affecting the south part of the county, only those people that have been assigned to that shelter are the ones that are gonna be working in that shelter. So, when the CIC opens, there are so many people. And again, everybody's being cross-trained as needed. I will move people when they're needed. But the goal is, North County, those people know that that's where they're gonna go and that's where the state of emergency is and that's their assigned location so that we don't have this moving people all over. I understand that sometimes roads get flooded, so things are washed out. That's when I have to make those decisions to move somebody out of their designated area into a different space. But that's how the sheltering piece goes. I just wanna go back real quickly because we were talking about the tracking of supplies. And that is also my responsibility. And how that is gonna work is as Jennifer does. She is our behind-the-scenes pulling all this administrative stuff together for all of us to do our job. She is the information keeper, so to say. So, when I get all of the data, and I have it, but when I get it in my tracking sheet, I will know exactly what is at each location where we have stuff stored. Shane Overstreet and only Shane will communicate directly with me, and I will keep all of that tracked. If there are phone calls that somebody says we need this or we need that, Shane is gonna direct you to call Jeff. Jeff is the contact, always. We're not gonna, we are gonna have streamlined contact points. If Jeff is not available, then it's me. But it is so that everybody can keep doing their work and we can serve our county to the best of our ability. So, we have streamlined all of that. But Shane will let me know when stuff has been dropped. I'll fill out my form so that I know exactly what's been delivered. And then, when Shane packs it up to send it out, he will let me know that as well and I will take that out of my supply. So, we're constantly gonna have a real-time, the goal is to have a real-time number of what we have available.
Good. Thanks. Like you said, we've added a lot of new steps, a lot of new tracking and all to our system out here. So, hopefully, it'll be a lot more streamlined. And like she said, if commissioners have issues, they have things, I see things out there. Y'all see things that need, or needs or something. Don't call Shane, don't call anyone else. Call me. David's got his stuff he's doing. Kevin will be more than busy doing what he's doing on his side. This will house will be, I will go house. Call me. And if there's something that we can get done or get fixed, we'll get it done best that we can. I'll put it out to whoever needs to be the one to, if it's a pod, if it's a shelter or if it's whatever, I'll disseminate it down to who needs. I'll do a little bit of boots on the ground too, checking on things out at the different areas and all, just making sure things are doing right. But if there's any issues, anything that comes up that you need city-wise also, please give me a call. And I'll be the one to make sure it gets handled better or explain what can and what can't be and reason why. And get what we can get or figure out how to make things work. That'll be my job in all of this. Once we do the shelters and all that, if there's needs for pods and all to be set up, there's certain things that we'll already put together. We've got our list and all of our immediate things we're gonna put out to pods as far as whether it be MREs or water or ice or tarts or anything like that. We've already got our stuff set up and our ways to go, our initial plan, our initial attack. And then, from that point, as things go along, if we need more or we need to change things or we need to move things, it's a fluid motion from that point on. With all of that, Shane's gonna be our boots on the ground, one coordinating pod sites and making sure that all the supplies are delivered and all that, our supplies.
And we already have our predetermined sites, you know, depending on the path of the storm. We always have, it's gonna be me and two other guys, probably Winston and Paul from Code Enforcement, that'll be assisting in handing out supplies and keeping those stocked up and getting with Carrie and let her know what's still available and what's actually a real-time count.
I did forget to mention one thing. Shane and I have been working on a project out there in the warehouse. We have rollout cages that we have made for every single one of the shelters. Like, if we open, let's say we open five shelters, worst-case scenario. We're not jinxing ourselves and not pulling wood. We open up five shelters. Those cages already have pre items stocked in them. They have blankets, they have a spill bucket in them, they have a broom in it, they have a rain jacket, they have gloves, they have a first aid kit. They have, they're gonna have our shelter box, which is what you use when you first go into the shelter, which is the sign-in sheets and everything, which is everything that we have set up for when they are activated at the shelter. Essentially, what we are doing with these cages is I wanted something for when, they also have toilet paper and paper towels in them. I wanted something set up to when they went to the shelter. It rolls in the shelter and it is a pre-stocked cabinet for our shelter workers. I didn't want them having to scramble around and find everything. And we now have acquired three trailers from Shann's. We are revamping those trailers and we are going to pre-stock those trailers with all the pots that needed to be delivered, and they're gonna roll out. I wanted everything set up to where every time we went out and had to do an activation, everything was a rollout. It was instantaneous. And then, you rolled the cages on there and then you went. Everything was instantaneous. We didn't have to go out there and go, oh, what have I got to get together? Everything was instantaneous out the door.
Yeah. So, we're wanting to have everything so in a moment's notice. We get, we have like our own little strike, area strike teams, like groups that will be able to, to immediately go out and set up. So if, there won't be a delay, there won't be a lot of having to get, get stuff together, package up stuff and all that. Jennifer's done a very good job of that. Now we'll have the three trailers that are coming from the Lake Shore Hospital Authority. We'll have them set up with stuff that's needed, so all we'll have to do is hook up and ride. And, and it'll be a quick, easy, quick setup, quick gets, quick getting started if, if that's needed. That also helps lessen the load on Donnie's crew.
Yes, that was my ultimate goal, was not have our maintenance crew is already out doing so much stuff. I wanted to keep it simple, you know, and just make it where everything's just very streamlined. We already have so many people out doing so many other things. If I can lessen the burden on other departments, I wanted to do that.
Also with this, second, uh, there's, as, as, as storms and all start to calm down and we're, we're still doing a lot of our stuff and all, our assessments and stuff. You know, we'll have to contact, uh, damage assessment teams, get them in, get them outfitted, make sure that they know what all they need, uh, stuff like that. Then something that we kind of hit on, but we, we kind of skipped over a little bit. One of the things we learned while we were in this, this training and all, that the way the state is going to look at things, they're going to look at things on, as far as putting out pods and putting out, giving out stuff. They're going to judge that a, a lot above, uh, big box stores. So they said if the big box stores are open, the grocery stores are open, Home Depot loads, stuff like that is open, they give us 24 hours. After that 24 hour mark, anything that's given and done will be on the county's dime, it won't be on the state anymore. And it won't be reimbursable, it's, it's on you then at that point. Now, if it's needed, if you think it's needed in an area, we're not going to cut out our citizens. But we just want y'all to know that after that, after the box stores are open, from that, after that point, this is county.
24 hour window.
For the, for the pods, if we have the pods out there, after 24 hours that those stores are open, it's on our dime.
And we have a list, we have an, an entire list, and it's not just the grocery stores, it's also like Home Depot and Lowe's. I made a list a couple of years ago of everybody with their phone numbers. I mean, actually, if, if we're too busy to call, then we go to dispatch and we say, hey, I wrote a script out and I wrote everything that needed to be asked. And it asks them, you know, are your deliveries slow? You know, are you having trouble getting your stuff? And there's a script where you don't even have to think about it. They just ask the questions and they fill out the form and they bring it back to us. That way we know if they're having a problem and if we need to keep, keep our, keep our activity going to where we're having a problem and we need more stuff from the state. That way we know kind of where we're balanced at.
When you say deliveries, you're talking about the stores, like if the stores are having issues getting stuff in, then we can continue on our side to keep stuff supplied.
Because that gives us an idea of where we stand. If they're having trouble, then that lets us know how much of it.
We need to put in a mission request from the state to update our.
Yes, because if it hits statewide, then, because last time, a couple, a couple of years ago, it, it hit statewide. And it hit them harder down south and it, it hit up, up in Georgia too. So we were having trouble getting deliveries here. I mean, it was affecting everybody.
I just want to clarify, when you say we, you mean the big, big box stores, not the.
Yes, the big box stores.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have to step out one second. I can't have the.
You're okay, you're okay, yep. So, um, what we want to talk about as far as the pods is have Shane discuss, um, the pods portion, how that works. The web EOC and then the ordering piece is what, um, he's going to explain for now.
Okay, so the web EOC, that is the program that we use that we communicate with. The state tells us when we have the ability to start ordering things for our communities in web EOC. They tell us when that board is up and going. If it's a hurricane event, it's 48, 72 hours in advance, depending on how far out that storm is. They tell us, go ahead, start ordering what you think you're going to need so that you can start getting it in, whether it's people, it's resources, it's equipment, those kind of things. The state has developed a guide now that will help us, a list of commodities that are available at that state level so that we can go in, okay, we need box trucks with a pallet jack son. We can order that through the state. We have that capability so that we can have that come here. And then the deliveries can then go out. And that's what Overstreet will work on, will be the, uh, delivery part of it and what's going out to which of the pod sites that have been determined that will be set up based off the plan that Jeff alluded to. So the web EOC, that is a major factor. And the county is responsible not only for county orders, but if Chief Butler, Chief Waynes or say, hey, we need some stuff in the city, their orders have to come through us also. So we have to make those orders on behalf of the municipality also. So they just tell us what they need, why they need it, so that we can get those orders in and get them what they need also. Shane, do you want to talk a little bit on that?
Just on the same thing, on the same note, not only the incoming that we get and it's going out in the field, you've got the demobilization, so that's where we have to keep track of everything, we're going to get reimbursed.
And while all this is going on, my day, anybody that's tried to call me during a, uh, event going on, more, more often than not, you've probably heard me say, let me give you a call back because I'm on a coordination call. We have multiple coordination calls through, throughout the day. In the morning, first thing in the morning, I think Jacksonville has moved this to 7:30 instead of 8 o'clock. We will have a call with National Weather Service Jacksonville. Then we will have a coordination call with our regional partners around the area in the afternoon. That involves, uh, all the surrounding counties. We go as far east as Bradford County, as far south as Levy, as far west over to Madison, and also include Hamilton and all that. We have a coordination call amongst ourselves with our regional coordinator with the division so that we can all get a snapshot of what the other counties are being impacted by. In addition to that, we have a second call in the afternoon with Jacksonville, they do a 1 o'clock call also. We have the 11:15 and 5:15 coordination calls with the state of Florida. Uh, the National Hurricane Center for the hurricanes, they're on board with those. So we get to hear from the hurricane center there. But it also gives us a chance, if we haven't heard back on missions, we can have the state, we can say, I need mission number 7085, I need y'all to look at that because I haven't heard anything and I was supposed to hear back from that. So those coordination calls are all ones that, uh, I have to do, uh, throughout the day. They have a volunteers call with Bethany on board as a part of the mass care, as a county contact there. I'll be able to farm that one off, let her participate on that one and see what the needs are there. But that's what the day looks like, both from the, uh, web EOC aspect and also from the pod aspect. So, but web EOC is that key thing for us to get the resources from the state.
Shane, just, uh, just to interrate also that, like, let's say, uh, if Kevin needs pumps, last year we needed some pumps. We need to just kind of think ahead. If, if we order just a pump, you'll need those. So we don't even kind of see a bank outside the box and additional items because I can put a delay on things. Of any other, anything else that the county needs, we need to make sure we got that resource also. Or it's included with that mission request.
Yeah, be as specific, if you need resources, be as specific as you can. If it's a piece of equipment that needs an operator, let us know. Because the worst thing is to have a piece of equipment on hand and not having anybody to, to utilize it, to drive it properly for its intended purpose. So, uh, Carrie, is there anything that I missed on that part that?
We talked about the ordering, the web EOC, and then the pods, did you talk about the pods process?
Yep.
We did, okay. Is there anything else, team, that you feel like we missed that we need to add at this point?
Well, we haven't really discussed, you know, the whole like incident action plan or battle rhythm. Do we, is that something that we wanted to touch on?
Well, that's part of what's.
Schedule of the day during an activation. It's very structured, it's not loose. There are scheduled meetings with specific individuals on the command and general staff that they have to be in attendance with the state and the weather service. So everybody's on board and everyone's getting the same correct information throughout the day. And so that incident action plan, the IAP, is what gets distributed to all levels of response, down to boots on the ground. So everyone knows, okay, this is the general situation, this is what resources we have, this is where they're going. This agency's taking care of this, this agency's taking care of that, and Shane heads all of that up.
That's why you see the battle rhythm up on the board up here. That dictates exactly how everything's supposed to go during the hurricane event.
Yes, and all of that does get reported back in our documentation with plans that Lieutenant Meyer is in charge of. They do all of our record keeping and that gets reported back to the state and to FEMA. So it's very important that those rhythms aren't disrupted, which is part of like the board meetings, allowing everything in here to continue functioning smoothly without interruption so that those agendas and meetings can be met in a timely fashion with all that they need to have prepared beforehand.
No, I pretty well, reminds us of it.
Okay, and then we thought that it would be important that you know what's happening during blue skies. When we're not in a state of emergency, um, what are we doing? So, um, Shane?
Yep, thank you. So, or just for a point of refresher and for Commissioner Parnell, being your first time going through with this, I have two main grants that fund my department. One is the EMPA, and that's state money, that's the Emergency Management Performance Preparedness Agreement, the Emergency Management Preparedness Agreement. Sometimes I have to remember my own appronouns, there's so many of them. But this is state money that comes through and, uh, funds my department, it funds my salary along with some of the other stuff that we pay for on a day-to-day basis out of the EMPA grant. But along with that, we also have stuff that we have to do to meet our scope of work for those grants. So we have to have certification of emergency management staff. This is a document that whenever the chairman gets my package, um, of the state grant, is one of the forms that's included in that. The chair signs off on that, that we do have a full-time director of emergency management and that he continues to support that. We have to, uh, update the statewide mutual aid agreement on a regular basis. That gets submitted to the state of Florida through a different web platform that we have to do. So we have that, that we have to maintain. Coming up in just a couple of weeks, I will do with my partner agencies, the Integrative Preparedness Plan and Workshop. We're going to look ahead and see what classes are going to benefit the partner agencies, those, uh, that work with us in disaster, what classes do we need to bring in so that we can have everybody the best trained, best prepared that they have. And this goes beyond the incident command, uh, classes that I already offer at least once a year as it is. I offer up those classes for the fire departments, for the police departments, anybody that needs them. They are able to come in and join. But this process goes over multiple years. So we'll look at training that we want to do, we'll look at any particular exercises that we want to do, whether it's a tabletop exercise where we're here in the room together, or if it's a functional or full-scale exercise where we're actually doing stuff with the boots on the ground on that side. Well, so we'll be doing that on, on August the 5th, and then we have to put up, put together a chart that we submit to the state. Let's see, the sheltering plan, point of distribution plan, we have to make sure that's up to date. The training that Carrie, uh, and Jeff talked to, that we went to in June, that is now mandatory, especially for me, being paid out of EMPA. I am required to attend that. At a minimum, I'm required to attend along with anybody else that can benefit from the county. And so I will, uh, be, that is a requirement that, starting with this year's grant, uh, we have to do. In addition, uh, with this, uh, federal, with the state money, I'm now required to participate in three exercises. So it can be ones that we put on, I can join in with somebody else in a neighboring county. There's different ways that I can achieve those three exercises and participation in the statewide exercise, whatever event they use for that on an annual basis. I have to participate at least one day in it as well. Local budget match forms, they're provided, uh, to emergency man, by emergency management. Uh, some of that information also comes over from finance. They provide it back to me once, uh, finance has filled out their forms, I submit it up to the state. The procurement policy, we got to make sure that the state has the most recent copy of our procurement policy. The other batch of money that I get is the federal money, the EMPG, this is the Emergency Management Performance Grant. And so there's, uh, quarterly match forms that we have to fill out as a part of the grant reporting process. The National Incident Management System Data Collection Worksheet, I'm responsible for making sure we're meeting all the requirements that are on that worksheet. Have to attend quarterly meetings with our Division of Emergency Management Partners. We have regional meetings around the region, also our local emergency planning committee, uh, hosting meetings with whole community stakeholders. Those are all things that we're responsible for during the blue skies that we have to do to meet all of our grant requirements to make sure that we're filling in and doing what we're supposed to by the labor law of the brand. Uh, also, there's a number of training hours that I have to meet. Since 2010, I've held the, uh, for professional emergency manager designation. I'm up for renewal for this year. Every five years I have to renew this, and by me having this, it qualifies me as meeting the state requirements in statute for emergency management directors. So I'm already meeting that requirement by having this certification. And I have to take 100 hours in a emergency management training over that five years, with 50 of that in a classroom setting, with 15 hours and three of the mission areas. So that's all stuff internally that I have to look for on top of when I'm instructing and teaching because I also hold a state instructor certification as well. That's also up for renewal this year too, which I will be, uh, putting that stuff down too. Also, our department is responsible for reviewing the comprehensive emergency management plans for assisted living facilities. Every year, the assisted living facilities here in the county, they have to submit their plan for our office to review it. We have a crosswalk that you go down, make sure that the appropriate information is in there. If it's not, we send it back to them, say, you know, please address these issues, send it back. But ultimately, if they do meet those requirements, we have them, uh, a letter that says you're, you passed the requirements based on the crosswalk that, uh, you submitted and you're good to go for another year. Captain Overstreet, he handles that for me because then he can tie that back in with the annual fire inspections that he has to do. So if it's outside the city limits, he does that. And of course, Chief Waynes or in his group, if it's within the city limits, they handle it on that end. Working with the school system, of course, for making sure that we have, um, good contacts for if we need to open schools for shelters, the special needs shelter, Westside Elementary School, that is always a special needs shelter. That is the one shelter that Carrie does not handle staffing, Diana and her team, they handle staffing because it is health department people that are working that shelter in a given disaster. So I think that is the bulk of, and to go along with us having those grants, I handle all the paperwork on a quarterly basis. I'm the one that goes through, gets all the paperwork that we need to submit to the state, put that documentation together, and then send it back up to the state once I have it completed so that we can get reimbursed because both of my grants, they're reimbursable. So we spend the mon, expend the money upfront and then they come back with it once we've submitted all the proper documentation. So that's kind of an overview of a lot of what keeps me busy outside of, uh, disaster time.
Then Jennifer takes that information that goes into his brain.
Adella that's up there now?
And weeds it out and gives it to us. Is there anything else that you want to share on before we, before we go to questions?
The goal of this whole exercise is to make sure that you feel comfortable that this aspect of emergency management is organized, structured, and can be, um, and fresh.
Well, and additionally, Senate Bill 180 now requires all of you to be trained. So this is kind of a little, a little taste of that so that you know what's going on.
Right. When you get a call from a citizen, you can say, okay, I'm going to call Jeff Crawford. He'll get this aspect taken care of. Road aspect, you're going to call Jeff Kirby, his crews will get those taken care of. So you have two major points of contact.
Yeah, and the training hours are to be determined, that's not in the statute. Uh, the Division of Emergency Management, they've been tasked with developing what that training hours looks like on a biennial basis for commissioners, for county administration, for city administration so that y'all can take the opportunities. The FTM Symposium that we talked about, the one in June, they will offer a lot of different training hours that can go to meet those requirements. So there's going to be different ways that the division will. So there's going to be different ways that the division will guide you and let you know how you can achieve these things without necessarily sitting in every single, uh, emergency management classroom FEMA that I can teach and those kind of things. So there's different ways about it and I'll be working with each of y'all on that aspect of it. Uh, but that's not all, there's a bunch of different things within the Senate Bill 180 that got redefined this year. Our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, that's going to become a big project because it looks like, based off how I'm reading this, we're going to have to go by the template that the state develops. And so with that, in a couple of years, it'll be time for us to resubmit, but we'll have to use that template and that'll be a major undertaking that we will have to take on over the next few years. Uh, special needs shelters, nothing really changed for us under special needs shelters. The one thing that I found interesting and I didn't realize was really a thing. Uh, if a person with special needs is responsible for the care of persons without special needs, those persons must be allowed to use special needs shelters. Well, we wouldn't have questioned that in the first place. We would have automatically, even if the caregiver was the one with special needs, we would have allowed them into our shelter. So that's not a big lift for us. By May 1st of each year, uh, the board must notify DEM of the person designated as the emergency contact for political subdivision and his or her alternate and of any changes in the persons so designated thereafter. For a county, the emergency contact must be the county emergency management director, which is part of what y'all do whenever you sign off on the verification of having an emergency management director that works for the board. There are some website requirements, we'll work with IT on that as far as getting that taken care of. Office requirements, counties and municipalities that have experienced a direct impact from a natural emergency must open a permitting office at which residents can access government service for at least 40 hours per week. That's something we're going to have to make sure that we follow through on.
The legislation this year changed a lot of the rules that affect building and zoning.
Yeah.
And we can have Troy brief you on those if you need to. When it comes to a natural disaster and after a natural disaster, their rules are changed.
But those are a few of the high points of the Senate Bill 180 that I wanted to touch on. Uh, if there's any questions on it, please feel free to let us know so that if we don't know the answer right off the bat, we can find out from DEM what the answer to the question is. But with that, I think that's all, unless I forget something.
No, I, oh, go ahead. No, you start first.
I was just going to say, one of, one of the things that we would like to do is with TARPs. Um, we would like to team up with the property appraisers office when they go out to do damage assessments and give TARPs at that time because number one, it's fiscally responsible. And number two, it, it pretty much, um, we feel that it encourages our constituents to call in and give that information to us on the damage so that we really have an accurate record.
And we do have a link when everything kind of amps up and the damage assessment team is starting to go out. The property appraisers office, um, we worked with them, I think it was about two years ago. Was it two years ago to put the link on there, on their website?
Sure.
So, so what will be the proceeds of that? So you have the, if somebody calls us, a lot of TARP, we put them in contact with the property appraisers office?
The CIC.
Yes, well, knowing the CIC and that way they can make a record of it.
Just filter them through the CIC. We will handle it from there and just encourage them to keep calling the CIC because that way we have a record of it and we can filter them through, um, the property appraisers office too, so that everyone is aware, um, once everything is amped up and they have a link on their website and you can click on that link and you can put in your address and you can actually give the information yourself and do your damage assessment through their website. So in, the way how that all started was there was a neighboring county, which we are friends with their emergency management director. She had it on her website, it was through a link through the property appraisers website and it got me to thinking, we, we need to work through something like that too. The easier, better, efficient way of connecting our constituents to, through to something and everything, a lot of apps and stuff are on your phone nowadays. If you can do it that way and make it easier and faster for our constituents, I'm all for it. So it's, it's worked out really well, our constituents, I've gotten great, excuse me, great feedback from our constituents.
I like that. Make sure we get, we get part of people through.
Yes, that, that was our, that was my heartache with it last year, is that we had people taking things that.
Free for all.
It was, people really, really needed them. And then we found that people that did not need them, they were showing up on Facebook and they were selling them, which is not the intended purpose. That is not, that is not where they needed to go.
And we need the people to let us know if they have damage to let the CIC know so we can get our damage assessment teams out there. Because there's a number of things beyond the immediate emergency that the damage assessment helps as far, it helps formulate our HMGP money, our hazard mitigation grant money after the fact. A lot of that is determined based off the number of confirmed damage that you have, those kind of things. So we really need to know the information just so that we can have the documentation and say, okay, maybe see a pattern develop if it's after a weather event. Okay, this area was hit hard, this area was hit hard, how did that kind of events, uh, after the fact?
That's why our CIC is so important too, because it not only just helps us document certain things as far as, you know, like people calling in and requesting stuff, it helps us document people calling in for damage assessment. I have a specific damage assessment section in there now. Um, it was in there before, but it was not as specific as it is now. Everything is drilled in a little bit more. I wanted everything having standardization in there. And now when people call in, everything's going to have blockaded sections. So now it's a little bit more streamlined.
Okay, so with all that said, do you have any questions about anything that we've discussed?
I still see one deficiency the county is going to have to address, and that's a permanent pet friendly shelter. The building we used last time is going to be full of Jay's records and not available. So that is still an outstanding issue we need to address.
I've made contact with the college, uh, they have the old, um, boys' club building, but a lot of it depends on, uh, once the new fire set, the new fire headquarters comes online, because they do have occupants within that, uh, building right now. So once that comes online, we, that, that's the goal for me is to try to get the pet friendly shelter to be over there. The old, that blue boys' club building that they used for so long.
Sure, continue it now. We're using a, probably a third of it, but our doors are secured.
Right.
So.
That's why we want to wait till everything.
Yeah, and we should, hopefully, gather a bunch of them.
So there's that, and the one other thing that David, Jeff and I need to work on is now that the reporter building has the tenants in it that it does, we won't be able to use it for, they were called disaster recovery centers by FEMA, but those won't be a thing this year. They're going to be multi-agency resource centers that are put on by the state. So we'll need to find a location that we can house that is going to offer the same services that disaster recovery center did. It just won't have that federal presence. It'll be state and local partners that will be occupying it for the post-disaster. So we got to identify a place that we can use for that also. Hey Josh?
Shane, uh, uh, on the flip side of Jeff being in contact through the county, I will be the same through the city. So our city council, contact me, I will contact Jeff, uh, kind of guide that as well. We've also, with the city manager has also suggested, and this is our HR director, Joe, to get some of our employees to be able to, uh, work in the CIC as well.
Yes.
So that city information can be funneled through the city, not, not everything through the county. So along with the partnership, we want to be able to try to assist as much as possible. So, um, whenever is needed, uh, we will want to, to make that happen.
And Jennifer, Carrie, I'll give a little Joe after we finish up, um, we'll start making that happen.
Chief, would that also be, you want to streamline through you as far as utilities, public works, everything that we need to go, to be, to go through you?
So I, I wouldn't change anything through the way that the, the ESFs are working. But if, but what I was saying is if, kind of like commissioners can call Jeff, my council members can call me. So it's not, they're not calling David or not calling directly out here.
Right.
They can funnel that through me and then I'll go through Jeff to get that information.
Perfect.
A little more streamlined so it's not chaos.
On y'all's public work side of things, how's that going to work?
So Steve obviously is in, in over that. Um, we are, we, we just had a meeting a few weeks ago, um, to have people in the EOC as well. Um, so it, it's new, it's new to everybody at the city, they always did it over there. So, um, the plan is, is to try to have those pertinent people in the, the proper places. So that's, that's a little.
Just so y'all are aware too, in the CIC program, um, as the call takers put everything in the system, there is one supervisor position at the very, when you first walk in the room on the right-hand side. That person, as she, she or he goes into the system, they take all the calls and they look at them and then there's a supervisor section in there, the distribution section. They distribute those out to the ESFs that they need to go through. That's why I always bug y'all every year and says, has your emails changed and what do we need to update? Because I just have that person disseminate them out to who they need to go to. I've always bothered everybody every year, I make sure is anybody's emails changed? I add emails, I change stuff out because it's very important that we add, like this year alone, I added to the DOT about five or six extra emails. They don't have one distribution email, they have separate emails, plus they want a phone call. So those little intricate details are very important when we're activated because like for the city, I have a public work side, I made them a separate section. And it's not just an ESF, such and such is an ESF, like point oh one and point oh two and point oh three. I did the same thing with the electric, it's subsectioned out for the electric. Those clay electrics, they get their own section for an email. Everybody has their own emails in there and everything gets an email to it and everybody gets it on their, on their stuff separately. It's not just one section and one person gets one email, everybody gets their own stuff. I make sure everybody's stuff is updated every year, so I can do the same thing with you guys.
Every police department, email is changed this year.
Great, thank you so much. Mine did too.
Thanks, Steve.
After all these years, I'm not, no longer an underscore anymore, I cried, so yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one more thing, Carrie.
All right.
Shane left, but, uh, Shane mentioned distribution of Sam, Winston and, uh. Uh, that's got to be improved because that don't work. The, uh, I mean, you're, you're asking three people to do the distribution from one end of this county to the other. It's, it's, last year it was chaos. And if you only got three people again this year, hopefully if you don't have one, it's going to be chaos again. Because number one, you didn't have the proper equipment, hopefully y'all got that resolved. But what I would recommend, reach out to the other, uh, the constitutional officers, the sheriff's office, that we know they got, they're, they're loaded down. Uh, but, and I'm not saying, and we realize we got assessment teams coming out of other constitution officers, but we also realize there's a lot of other employees that could be helping on this aspect here. But, you know, watching Shane go to the end of a 53-foot trailer took me water. That, that, that ain't going to work, we got to do better than that. And, uh, and just.
You're talking about actual teams helping to offload the.
Offload and distribute. I mean, you, you, you know, you got, uh, because one incident, uh, nothing that Winston never do wrong, but I mean, they're, they're in the middle of, they're, they're going, going, going 12, 14 hours a day. And, you know, you get out there and you're as old as Winston, you're, you're, you're distributing 100 cases of water, it, it gets you.
Yeah.
Sometimes when you get there, all you got is elderly people there and you surely don't want to come for them.
Right.
It's a, it, it's, it's a big deal. And, uh, that's, I've seen a big downfall of that. Me and David had a discussion about that, but, you know, we should have the proper force at these areas.
Another question on that, what Tim did. The distribution sites have got to be manned by somebody.
Yeah.
You cannot just drop stuff off out there and just set it up.
Well, and, and actually, um, how we're doing distribution now, Rocky, is it's going to be from a time to a time, right? And it's going to be manned and, um, everything is going to be portioned out. So I, our hope is, the reason that we did it that way is the hope is that we won't have these fallouts, um, like we did last year.
Yes.
So that, that.
You leave it unmanned.
Yeah, it's going to be.
First ten people come by, it's gone.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen them hauling out pickups and loading water, you know what I'm saying?
One of the things that we discussed, and I don't know where we are with it, uh, is getting, um.
The Connex boxes.
Connex boxes and having them at those locations where if it's nine o'clock in the morning, it's open, it's manned, they're being distributed. If it's nine o'clock at night, they're shut down, everything is there. What we left with at night is what's going to be there in the morning, aside from what needs to be replenished. So that is one of the things we would ultimately like to see happen.
But.
But it will be manned.
But like on Shane's situation, you know, you get a main supply truck come in here that needs to be, the supplies in there has got to be distributed to the other places. That's, that's, that's part that I think gets missed a lot because we, we, although you got National Guard sitting over here and there, you know, distributing and doing whatever, he with three, him and two others have got to try to get it there. That, that, there definitely needs to be more than them there, you know?
I think that'll go to a whole lot, cutting down on the number of distribution sites.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think we tried to overextend ourselves with sites.
But to that degree, I agree with both of y'all, we got to plan for the worst-case scenario. So what if we do have to have three or four sites open up, we've got to have that plan in place.
Cause we.
We're so long, you know, I want them discounted to what goes on at Deep Creek is totally opposite to what goes on the south side of the county. You know, it's, uh, so there's, uh, there are definitely needs there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we will definitely explore that and, and get that, um, beefed up a little bit.
Yes, I agree.
Kevin, how hard would it be to load like the 10 by 20 Connex box for, for the, for the road department as far as assisting us with drop-offs and stuff like that with possibly three, like designated spots right off the bat? Would that be an issue with, I mean, ongoing stuff that y'all have going on in the county?
I mean, for equipment personnel.
Well, being able to just like take a front end loader or something and fork it off at different locations, three different boxes. Both personnel would be asking to utilize your equipment as far as like a, a flatbed, I mean, a lowboy and a piece of equipment? Would that be?
You know, it all depends on nature of the soil, you know what I mean? So if you've got flood event versus wind event or both, you know, so that. But, but I'll circle back to you. Mr. Chairman, I want to remind y'all something, we had a workshop. Out of all, and I, obviously these guys and Carrie, Jeff and everybody else, we done exactly the lot we promised we'd do. But when you skin this potato all the way back, the question always is of what services are we going to provide irregardless of base being, okay? So Kevin, this is going to be your, hopefully we don't have to do it this year. I've been doing this a long time. Through the years, we keep elevating what we do during these events, right? I remember we didn't do ice, we didn't do TARPs, we didn't do shelter, we always did shelters. Until two years ago, we never formed out, uh, cut and toss and repick up, right? So whether it's the public demand, whether it's just a storm's worst, whether it's a combination of, we had a workshop. We come back to the board, but there was some disagreements related. We never adopted what we said we were going to provide one way or another. So these guys have done an excellent job of logistics and the best you can do with something like this. And I'm not getting away from you, but what made me think about it, that's the part that in cold waters, in my opinion, everybody needs to get to terms with. What do you provide? And that was the purpose of the workshop, the purpose of the exercise. I really, really believe in cold waters, we need to revisit that. Because that's what happens, of everything I've heard last hour, they're ready. But what is ready? We know our neighbors over there looking at a $7 million problem. Shane, you, you talked a lot of detail about the Senate bill and.
Right.
You talked about what's reimbursable, what's not. Columbia County's always took the position in the past, everything changes. That you jump out there and you put county back together and hopefully we get reimbursed. But those are the questions that everybody needs to ask themselves. Do you continue with that personality? And at what level do you trigger A, B, C and D? That, I think you've heard the team and they've done, if you recall last year, there were some expectations requested that simply some understood, some did not. So I went to Jeff and Carrie and I remember like yesterday right in that room, Carrie, you're at, and Jeff, you're at operations. Shane, you do what you do with the EOC and that's how we overcome that problem. Now, we still got out there, you know, the cold storage similar to ice last year. So we, we learned a lot of what to do, what not to do. But at the end of the day, when y'all guys, we skin this all the way back, what are we going to provide? We know we're going to cut and toss, we're never going to pick roads up, we're never going to pump roads off. We all, and we understand all that. What level do you do the TARPs? What level do you do the tarps?
And I'd like to, I'd like to echo what Kevin said. Now, they've done all this work based on the plan that was brought to you earlier that was not adopted. So this is based on what we presented you earlier. The biggest problem we had last year was we went into the storm thinking your expectations were here. And we got into the storm and you told me to know our expectations are up here. So we need to understand the board's expectations if we're going to meet those expectations. So we had before the storm, supplies. Turned out we didn't have enough supplies because we didn't think we'd need that much supplies. But when the board came in and said, no, our expectations are much greater than what you planned for, that's when we started scrambling. But we need to understand what your expectations are so that we can meet them.
At, at the same time, if you go back and look at those documents that Kevin had given you, we have laid out a, what we think would be a reasonable plan based on the situation, right? Like based on power outage and based on there's flooding and those. So we laid that out and that is kind of the goal of all of this. So when Kevin says, you know, knowing what it is you expect, if you'll take some time and maybe go look at that, and if you want to give us feedback, that would be great. But we kind of have an idea, but again, when, when gray skies hit, are we doing what you want?
So like what you were discussing, what your concerns were and what my concerns were too about them running back and forth and making deliveries. The layout of the plan that we have is let's say it's a horrible catastrophic event to where it's the worst storm. We are to deliver first thing in the morning, a pallet to, a pallet to each shelter. That is it. That pallet goes to that shelter first thing in the morning. That's it. It doesn't get anything else. And then all of our cots and the, and we pre-stage everything before the storm ever gets there to the shelters where everything's already there and it's already ready. But that pallet gets there too, ahead of time too. Everything's are, yeah, they're not scrambling, they're not running and stuff. Everything is going to be pre-staged and pre-set up, but it is already pre-staged and it's already there.
Okay, pre-staged and already there. What timeframe are you talking about?
You're talking what, twenty-four hours at least?
Yeah.
Totally get that. But we all realize that a pallet of water don't go real well. And I'm not saying that you gotta go out there and reset it in the next hour or so. What I'm saying, that when the time comes, when they do restore, he ain't got enough help. That's fact.
No, that's true.
And it's not enough.
We are going to talk about it.
I'll be honest with you. Nobody really knew where they were at.
In between. Honestly, we were in between.
You were getting pulled from everywhere.
They're headed to you now with water and everything and four hours later, well, they were in Deep Creek. I thought they were headed to you, but they're in Deep Creek, you know?
We had, we had a north and a south border, which mainly like on the north end, they were taking up the Deep Creek and Winfield and odd locations there. On the south end, and honestly, we were doing, we were handjacking pallets of water, breaking them down on our own and trying to go to either Mason City or Fort Wyatt. And we were fortunate enough to have Sheriff's Department come over and help us with the inmates and bring that on board. That was a blessing and they've actually.
Manual labor involved and God just delivered it, what y'all tried to get there. I mean, I know, I've met y'all there a bunch of times and I helped a lot.
I would, I would personally just, in my opinion, I might have, you know, we can either partner up with a, another department or either maybe you invest in a, a box truck. Cause I mean, we're using, use a private vehicle.
Shane, you, you, you slipped that real quick, but that, that's exactly what I was saying. We've got the other constitutional officers. We've got some assets there that we can definitely utilize. And, and just like Josh said a minute ago, you know, the, the city's got their responsibilities also with infrastructure and issues. But it's a big, major team effort and we all realize, I mean, I, I visited a couple of shelters last year and to see, you know, the few that were there and knowing that there's a bunch. And don't get me wrong, everybody in this community, even though the people that were asking to come out here and do what y'all do, y'all, y'all are affected by this storm also. That's what, that's another thing you can forget. But, uh, what Jennifer's saying, I like that a lot. You, you, you pre-stage, you do what you can and you get everything there. But you got to be consistent. And just because you get a bark from a particular group, don't mean you got to change your whole aspect of things. And, and that's what's important about this guide that Kevin was sharing with there. That's a, and I was going to bring that up, Kevin, to that point that we, we definitely need to revisit that because we as a board, we let that lapse and we, we got to pick that up again like now. And go ahead and get that adopted to, you know, make what changes we're going to make if we're going to make it. But that needs to be, go back through the process, I think, and be adopted.
It, it's, once again, we had a workshop. I took that information from the local board. And for one reason, we didn't pass it. So at the end of the day, you know, it's there, whatever tweaking needs to be done. But I do think, and I hate policy sometimes because it makes things rigid, but it does take a lot of argument out of it. Cause if one wants to be hit, then everybody's going to pay.
It gives us some structure to where Shane ain't running. I'll never forget him running back, being him was out there and he's in the end of another trailer.
A while ago, twenty-four hours after the major box stores opened, state cuts it off.
Yes.
One thing we need to understand, Kevin's district up at Deep Creek and my district down at Three Rivers, we're not two miles down the road to a Walmart. We're not two miles down the road to a Lowe's. Whichever way you go is fifteen, twenty miles to a big box store. That's sometimes hard to get done for some people.
For sure. And that's.
You got to pay special, you got to pay more attention to those areas. And somebody lives right here in town that's a mile up the road, you know, to Walmart and it's back open.
Well, then that's where you guys will make that decision, right? Like you will know that after twenty-four hours, if it's open and the state says we're not paying any longer, that's where you make a decision. Do my constituents need this? And you all make that call and we follow along with you.
That could be one of those situations where we submit it, they deny it, and then we argue.
But that goes back, Rocky, what I said to begin with. Columbia County's always took the position, we're going to put her back together and if we get reimbursed, that's great. If we don't, we don't. But that, that's why, that's why, once again, that's why I was so fond of after the, especially last year, last year. After what we learned not to do, that was what the team and I, I presented. Here, here's a kind of a checklist. Here's what we're going to do. And I, I think it's so important goes once all hell breaks loose, then everybody's got, it is what it is.
Well, what I'm bringing out about, if we got to get over the fact that some commission would say, well, if you're going to do it to my district, that district.
And Rocky, that's the whole purpose of the template. Let's go to private roads. Rocky and Everett. Y'all got all private roads for the most part, right? Y'all are eat up with it. I get it, I get it. So what I was trying to do with that narrative is, and Joe weighing here when I'm wrong, with the private roads, you have to have everybody in the world agree that you can go on private road legally. So I was trying to streamline that. If y'all recall, Rusty was here, we come in here, Joe helped me out, voted on twenty roads at one time. It was just a hot mess. If you'll read what I put in there, it streamlines it. It strings line that you can go out there, you evaluate it, we're in best position, direct butt works, evaluates it, comes back in here. If you do it any different than that, you're going to have about three board bits. Cause at some point I got to go evaluate. And if you'll read that narrative, and it's just not my product, this team of people put that together, I tweaked and presented it, that narrative is to accomplish.
So we need clarification. They didn't store them last year. I know everyone was told this, I was told this. Before anybody went out and held this road, we got to get everybody to sign this letter. Then all of a sudden, no, we don't even get everybody to sign this letter. So then I want clarification. Do they need to sign the letter or do they not? Need to sign a letter saying that we can go on this problem. Cause that.
You talking about during state of emergency?
Yeah, during state of emergency, yes.
Yeah. So in the throes of a state of emergency, there are exceptions, life safety exceptions, right? We talked about cut and toss. I get ahead of you.
Go ahead, I'll, I'll.
So there were cut and toss operations that we can kind of do those over people's objections, right? We're allowed to do that. It's the restoration and maintenance work where we start to get into gray area. Okay. The, the case I always like to highlight for you guys, that I personally, Joel Foreman thinks this is ridiculous. But this is the opinion of the, of the Attorney General of the State of Florida. A county was reprimanded for going in and restoring a water management district levy road because they determined that only benefited private property. That's how silly this is. And I'm agreeing with you guys. It's silly. A lot of this stuff is silly, but it's the rules we have to make sure we're not improperly spending money, you know, from, from on high. So during a state of emergency, you have a large oak tree that falls, it blocks a subdivision. And it happens to be on the person in front of subdivision's private property. It's like, I don't want you coming on here. Tough, life safety, we're going to cut and toss, we're going to take care of it, right? If the road is damaged to the point it's impassable, life safety, we're going to come in and dump buildings, we're going to do whatever we have to do to make it passable. When we get into the full blown restoration work, if it is clearly storm related and if you guys voted storm related, I believe we can remove those objections, okay? Where we just want to go in and clean up a road or do the grading work or do a, a private road assessment program, now I need consent. Now I need everybody to say that's fine. Otherwise we've got no right to be on their property. So anytime you can invoke life safety, which again, life safety is a big deal. And you have a state of emergency that's kind of covering, remember that statute says a lot of the formalities and reg. That's one of the formalities that we can say, well, the statute says we can get around that. It is tough. And I, it's, it's very fact specific. So what we have to do is the ones that don't seem so fact specific intensely, you know, tree down in the rock. The ones that are easy, let's let people handle those administratively. Let's limit it so that the ones we're talking about are really the tough cases. And I think that's where having some guidance that Kevin's working on and like the team's working on that says, where A, B, and C are present, we just go, right? We don't have to ask the board. But where, where we don't know about one of those things, let's, let's go ahead and have.
That's where we had them consent letters that we all.
And that's where you run into, you know, it's just, I'm trying to thread the goal so that we don't get sideways, but we can take care of people, make sure people are safe.
If I could clean it up, Joel, if I'm not reading you right.
Well, you say it simple the way the lawyer said it.
Under a state of emergency based on my experience, if you've got a tree, basically if you cannot drive a Honda Accord down the road, I think that staff should be able to have the ability to go in there, get rid of the tree, pump the water off, stuff like that. Anything without all the consent, I think is just common sense. We don't want somebody can't come out to the hospital. So now once beyond that, I think there's a process needed. But quite frankly, I'm never coming here and ask you guys, when there's an oak tree across the private road, hey guys, y'all think that's a good idea? We just go get it, okay? Now, at some point, what we always run into, and I don't blame the people, unfortunately a lawyer down there says you can't do it. Once you open up the books to a state of emergency, they, they always want to come in and fix private roads back, make it look like a private road assessment. That's where the argument starts. It has to be.
One other thing I want to address, and you don't have to address it today, but I want to, I want to firm understanding on it before we have to face another one. Debris on private, on private roads. Now we go around all the county roads to pick up debris when they outside the road. Last year it was a big deal. Several people on private roads piled up debris. It was hurricane debris on their property. And we, we wouldn't pick it up because it's on private roads. I won't, I won't, I want to look at that because I, I don't think that that should be the case. If it's hurricane debris, it's on a private road and it's a traveled road by several residents, I think the county should pick that debris up. I don't know what the legality of that is.
You want us to try to figure out how to get that?
I want to figure out how to kind of get that done.
And couldn't we reach out to somebody, the Attorney General or somebody like that?
Well, the more research I do, the higher the wall gets. Again, I'm of the opinion that when y'all get together and you say, let, let's go do it, but you know, the, the big consequences, we may not get to even reimburse it for that, right? That's the real big clawback. But that's what we, when I look at other jurisdictions, they're primarily concerned that the work they do is going to be reimbursable. Honestly, guys, the way the environment is right now, who's to say there's even going to be FEMA? So if it comes down to we want to do the right thing versus we want to make sure we're getting reimbursed by FEMA, there's five of y'all, if you decide you want to do the right thing.
I mean, my question would be, when you haul that in there, they're giving you so many yards on that truck. They don't know where that came.
They can tell the hurricane debris. But they know where it came.
They know where it go from. And, and I want, let me say for the record, I've always been the opinion, put it back together, as long as you're not breaking the law, what you get back, get back. What you don't, you don't. That's just my opinion. I agree with you. If legally, I think it's terrible to tell a little gal, she got to haul all her stuff just cause it's a little private road out in the public roadway. I think that's insane.
I've got filed with the debris steel right now today.
So that's why I feel it's so, so important to revisit that guideline. That way, right now, we're all seventy-two degrees, nice and friendly today. When those storms hit, everybody's going to get upset, right? If we have some kind of template that we agree in calm waters, what you just talked about, what we all talked about, whatever that is, that way at least you can say, well, in calm waters, when we were thinking straight, we agreed on this, it must've been a pretty good idea. But this is July, we're six weeks away, we're short of showtime if we're not careful. Guys, I would strongly, strongly recommend, let's polish that guideline off. And what, guys, I don't care, y'all can change. What my goal is, is to walk in there with that template, here's what we're going to do.
We need to know what your expectations are, what we're going to do upfront, so we can get it done efficiently.
The other thing I would say, have a list for me.
What we run into, Rocky, is, is when we're trying to make policy decisions in gray skies, they look at those real, but they don't like those decisions. So if we're saying, let's try to adopt policy now that says, that's what we're going to do in blue skies, they can't really say that we were just reacting.
Echo Joe, when we went through all this last series.
Synergy.
Synergy and series. I remember when we were going through all this, when they saw all the contracts and the policies, all the stuff we did, there was no question. Everybody was cool. But what Joe said's a big deal based on my experience. They look at you real weird if they think you're a knee jerk reaction. If you planned it and you've got it black and white in calm waters, for whatever reason, the feds seem to be receptive of that. That's why I encourage so strongly, and Rocky, or anybody else, whatever you will see amended to that. Absolutely. But that was the whole intent. Everything you've heard here today is administrative, they got their stuff together. But the meat on the bone is that guideline that says, what are you going, how many shelters are you going to do? How many pods are you going to do? How many locations of ice? And until we get our mind around that, it is chaos.
And if you can each submit those to us, we can put them together and bring them back to the board for the board to vote on. So if you take a few minutes and outline what you want to see changed or what you might have issues with, package it all together and then the board can.
I'll have Sherrell email you guys, kind of a mystery. I'll email y'all what was presented here several months ago. And then if y'all don't mind, just go through and highlight, redline, send it back to us. And then we'll clean it all up and get it adopted probably.
And if I can, while we're talking about the debris movement a little bit, we talked about passing an ordinance that would more strictly regulate our debris contractors. I'm finishing that up. I'll circulate it for you all in the next few days. But essentially the same protocol we did under the emergency ordinance, which is post signs everywhere somebody's coming into the county, hey, you need to be registered. What I do need for my emergency, folks think about, I'm thinking that a vendor can get an, a registration number per year. You know, just issue like your number one, your number two, your number three. They have a duty to tell whoever they're dealing with, hey, I'm registered, registered, you know, number one, number two, number three. We collect contact information in exchange for that registration number. We stay on top of them during a storm. I think about that is going to have a lot less debris that we're going to find ourselves in charge of because the folks who come in and do the work are going to do a lot of the whole.
And the guidelines of what it's going to take to do it, and even out of town people.
And then once you do that, we need to publicize it to the public that when you're hiring this person, make sure they've got this number. Well, the other thing we're going to do that I, and so pay attention to this, the signage requirements. We're going to work with D O T and with the city of Lake City and our local jurisdiction to make sure that anybody coming in is seeing a sign. But the other thing I want to do, think about what the threshold should be, our larger neighborhoods, I think there should be signs in front of those neighborhoods. You know, uh, when I was down on Santa Mel Island, half the island got destroyed, there were big signs. It is illegal to contract, you know, to do work without a permit in this. big signs, it is illegal to contract, you know, to do work without a, a permit in this, on this island.
But Joel, that's what I would encourage, and I know I'm sounding crazy, I wish you would put, add that to the list from the guidelines, if you may, the signage, anybody's ideas are welcome. Everybody's got their own deal, but let's put that in there so we don't roll in there to a boardroom and everybody's up on their ear, standing on their head, what, this, well.
And that's what I'm saying, when I send this out, if you'll just pay close attention to it, give it, give it about 10 minutes and really study it. And then you guys have been through it, Kevin had, yeah, but he's about. Think about, like you said Rocky, you know, what happens down on Miami to the county, it's not like what happens. So if you look at that and say, well, there, some of that ain't gonna work for us, so just let me know, we'll massage it, I would like it to stop. And the thing is, once it's adopted, we still have to have time to figure out how many signs we need to print, print the signs, get the posts, get all the logistics, so that when it's time to post them, we can.
But that, but what Rocky brought up is a good arc, a good debate, if you may, is the board needs, in my opinion, in calm waters, needs to say, okay, you know, anything 15 miles beyond Walmart, we're gonna allow to continue doing X, Y, and Z even after 24 hours. If that's the board's desire in calm waters, I think it looks much better when you go to re, get reimbursement. If we didn't knee-jerk, we weren't playing politics, we talked about calm waters, here's a reasonable approach. If I was on FEMA side of things, I'd say, well, that makes sense.
Another thing we need to look at too, when we're making these decisions during a storm, is how the power is restored. Because I don't know why, but I can, you can look back at every storm since I've been here, Three Rivers is gonna be the last one to get power. They're gonna be the last ones to get power, I don't care. Play electric, for some reason, Three Rivers, they get tore up the worst, and, and I know why it is, because they're gonna get the most people on the fastest they can get on. And Three Rivers requires, they always requires, basically rebuilding the power lines down there.
Same thing up in Deep Creek. They're the last ones to get power way out there, they're the last ones.
But like Kevin said, you know, let's go ahead and state that now in blue skies. And so when it comes to getting reimbursed, that policy's been there.
Where I learned my biggest lesson was back in the '12, truckers going to come through. Anybody that's got much common sense about a road knows that billings is the only thing that's gonna stand up underwater. And it blew my mind when they denied reimbursement, asphalt billings all over their roads. They said you should use dirt. I said, you can't push a bulldozer or dirt with standard water gas. And we already argued and we did not get reimbursed. They, they reduced it down to what the, uh, quality or the, uh, quantity, value of dirt was. Well, what I realized then, that's why I say if you adopt it in blue skies, if they said I was just pushing too fast, I could've done different, I, I could screw with that. But here and there, if it's power, if it's grocery stores, if it's Lowe's, if the state says, or whoever says, it's only 24 hours, in calm waters, I feel comfortable, but we go, you guys on the administrative side, go and say, well, here's our reimbursement needs, we told you it wasn't required. Well, we, we decided, you know, it's 20 miles away, that's not reasonable, at least it's a form of conversation.
So to, to build on that, rebuilding something better, correct me if I'm wrong Shane, there are mitigations to help fund rebuilding better.
But that's way after.
That is way after the fact, but I just didn't know if maybe that would fall under that review.
So what, what I'm referring to, let's go back to private road traffic. The argument has always been this. If the attorneys have always educated me, we can pretty much do what we need to do to get somebody in and out.
Yes.
Once that's done, to go and improve private roads and things of that nature, I've been asking through the past, that's where you get the gray area.
Right.
Okay. So, and I hope, the whole purpose is, I think it's so important, I'll email you guys, let's, let's get us a good guideline with y'all's input, clean it up, let's get that thing adopted in like 30 days, 40 storms here. That way, in my opinion, and Jeff, you hit on something a while ago, we always gotta remember, if Kevin up there gets a tornado coming, that guideline's not 100% right, cause Rocky might be affected or vice versa, right? So it's gotta be a lot of common sense used so far. But at least I'm more for the reimbursement side about having a template in blue skies. I just think it's helpful.
If we can get it to you quickly.
I'll do it in an hour.
And you say two weeks, you can either have that on the August 7th meeting, longer than two weeks, to August 21st.
I think August 3rd.
Plenty.
You guys, I'm gonna email to y'all as soon as I get out of here.
So we'll plan to add it to the August 7th.
Y'all can break it off.
If I could, the one thing I just want to put a button on all this with, the reason why Kevin's talking about the feds look so favorably on blue sky policies, they want to see that you do it whether there's a FEMA declaration or not.
Yes.
That's the bottom line, they want to make sure that you're just not doing this to get the money back. So that, that's just to build on what Kevin was saying and why the blue sky policies are so important, so.
Just for the record, myself and Jeff had a discussion last week and I'll be bringing this to the board, but going through all this Lakeside Reporter deal, we were walking around this corner, I'm gonna be, me and Jeff, we're gonna get our heads together and try to do an appropriations ask, uh, this upcoming legislative session for a storage facility.
We need one.
Out at Lake Jeffrey, centrally located in the county, boom, 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 you know, everywhere, just a place to, all of our storage items are in one place. Y'all just spoke, a shed here, the shed there, you know, and so, but my point is, is that, but it's properly facilitated to where so that every part of the county could benefit from it. Four cliffs there, everything's sitting there, I'm just roll the doors up, go to work. It's a, you know, when you look at these appropriations all over the state, that, you know, nobody can deny, you know, emergency management issues such as that, I should say, you know, anything's possible, but I just think we're, we're to the point now we're large enough, I think it's a, it's a state, you know, it's a path we need to take and really, really think about.
Will need to be heated and aired because it seems to expire when they're out.
That's why we left the water where we have it, because it's climate controlled and I didn't want it back here.
That would be excellent, that would be excellent.
Just like we're saying, Commissioner and I discussed this a little bit, uh, the other day, where we had discussed it a good bit, we've talked about it a couple different times. And, uh, there is a need, there, there's definitely a need, like I, like we said before, we need to be able to stand on our own feet for at least 24 hours before we expect help from anybody else.
Yes.
That warehouse and all will do it. That, that's, that's our ticket to being able to handle that.
And it makes us more efficient.
And a legislative certification would be nice, perfect, but I think that's something we probably could run to building a lot of that ourselves.
That, that's, that's true, that's true, but, and I guess I'm kind of going over, I ain't gonna say everybody, but I think there needs to be a four cliff sitting there the whole time, every, you know, none of this scrambling, you roll the door up and you go to work.
I'll be honest with you, what I would do, the four cliffs at all time, I would probably just rent one during the emergency and have it sitting there.
Well, that'd be easy.
The only problem that we've seen, I'm sorry.
The only problem with that is what I learned last time when we made that little trip across the water over here, there wasn't a damn four cliff available because everybody put that, that crazy, somebody spoke of it earlier, request what you need, but there